Okay, everyone, if we could give just one more minute as our first topic is ski joring, and I am not sure that Duffy Council is on the meeting yet.
Anne is in the process of getting him online.
Thanks, Paul.
You bet.
I'm in. Bye-bye.
All right.
Now it's Anne's turn.
Oh, okay, we'll wait for Anne to jump in. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:03, and this is a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, February 9. The first thing on our agenda, hopefully a relatively quick conversation, maybe first half an hour, will be the ski joring application as a special event. We have been considering special events on a case-by-case basis through COVID and the pandemic. And so I know that staff and referral agencies have been working with the event coordinator, Duffy Council, who has joined us here today. And Anne in Landus, I'm not sure if you want to present the application. I know you had sent us a document for review. Would you like me to share that? Do you think it'd be helpful if Duffy recaps what the proposal looks like? Take some guidance from you there.
Sure. So if you would typically, I think what we do want to miss is we just kind of bring back to the board, the recommendations from the agencies that we have in the, you know, kind of the document, like if you said, if you want to screen share, we can kind of go through them briefly. You know, what the responses have been and the proposed conditions coming from those responses, and then certainly open the floor up to Duffy to, you know, talk about any of those outstanding concerns or any questions that the board has. So if that sounds okay, Sarah.
Oh, yes, I think that sounds great.
Okay. So we did review the special event for Levalle Ski Joring at the new, or at the, this year's location on McWethy for March 5 through 7. And the following are conditions suggested based on the responses that we received from stakeholders and the review agencies. So the first is that the event shall abide by local and state health regulations in place at the time of the event to include, but not limited to, the outlined health screening and tracking as described within the application. So pretty much an app, kind of a standard operation that, you know, we will probably bring forth as a recommendation in all applications during COVID. So I think that's kind of a standard condition that you probably will see us recommend or the agencies recommend moving forward, at least as long as we're on the dial. Um, the event shall have no more than 75 participants, athletes, along with additional supportive staff. I think that Duffy contemplated that there'd be about 16, maybe, supportive staff, but that might fluctuate a little bit. But there is discussion within the second seminole that just kind of really identifies how the event has really spread people out, and they're not all congregating in one location. So being outdoors really aided, I think, the ability to support the proposal that's been brought for. And then the event is subject to the Levalle County Fire Rescue approved emergency access plans. So both of those, Plan A and Plan B, have been fully vetted with Levalle County Fire Rescue. So at the city council meeting, those were two, were kind of the homework that came out of that. And so Chief Daley has confirmed that those are both acceptable plans. Um, then the event staff will, or event staff support will be located at the road closures to ensure public access to areas of concern as identified by area stakeholders to include the intermediate school parking lot, potentially the aquatic center may be open. That's an unknown at this point, but that use as well as staff and maintenance may need to get into that lot. And so Duffy has certainly been agreeable to making sure that that access is going to be present. Along with the Presbyterian Church, we talked to Peggy Marshall, and they will have the parishioners attending services on Sunday during the event. Plus, they also have guests staying at the church on Friday and Saturday. So just ensuring that, I will also provide Duffy with Peggy's direct contact number so that they can just touch base and make sure that that coordination is, is. She did, I did forward her the route, and she felt confident that they would be able to work together to make sure that they had access. And then residence onto County Road 36, making sure that those property owners can get in and out as needed during the weekend. The event will provide proof of liability insurance, will Lake County listed as an additional insured, and just provide that to our department. We keep it in the file. So Duffy and everybody talked about that, and once he has approval, he will contact his insurance provider. The bathrooms located at the community park may be available for use, but the event still will provide a porta potty as an alternative. And again, something that Duffy has agreed to and said that they will plan on. And then if the mineral belt trail is determined to be an allowable access, so I think that is probably one of our, oh, and it looks like Amber just said that maintenance has agreed that the bathrooms will be open and for use for the event. The mineral belt trail, I think, is still an undetermined aspect. And so we just want to add it and put in some conditions in the event that it is going to be part of the return route for the horses and riders. And so if it is in use, then the event shall be responsible for the trail maintenance needed to return it to pre-event condition. And the event shall be responsible for signage to alert other users of how access is being managed. So if a detour is needed, we would be looking for the applicant to provide that detour to the county for coordination and approval. And then basically the same thing, if the trails close, the event shall be responsible for submitting a detour plan for the approval prior to the event. So either how to manage other users on the trail, or if it's closed, how to reroute those users. And then the event will be responsible for all cleanup, and the area will be returned to the same condition prior to the event, pretty much, pretty standard. And again, the last one is standard as well. The permit is conditional upon all statements, routes, operational plans, applications, and supplemental, supplemental submittals as provided by the applicant. So standard operating practice to include whatever they've submitted to us as a condition of approval. And so pretty, pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, just be happy to answer them. I think there might be some other people, review agencies, present today in case they have any specific other concerns.
I don't think that I have any questions. I will add, I was not able to get ahold of the Mineral Belt Trail chair, but I think that from my conversations, Public Works does not have concern over any damage to the mineral belt. And I understand that there were concerns over general use. And I, I would be confident in having that language specific to, you know, the short event period and the limited impact on the trail, it being covered with packed groomed snow. So I think that that's, I have comfort there. And the other piece that I think, it doesn't appear to be a question, but that, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to scan through again, on the awards ceremonies at the Elks, it seems that that is, those details are also ironed out?
Um, yes, what I got that they were, and I can't tell who's on the call. I'm not as familiar with Paul's, oh, right here, if Public Works is present.
I don't think Public Works is on.
I mean, Public Health, sorry.
Oh, I don't think Public Health is on either.
Okay.
Not that I can tell.
I did receive an email from Colleen and Jackie that basically they are going to, the event has agreed to operate by the standards that the Elk Lodge has in place. And so it's not deviating from anything that is normal operations right now for, and the event will just abide by what's in place for the Elk Lodge.
Another just outstanding comment, which I have already communicated to Duffy, there is not great bandwidth probably down there. And I know he had asked for IT, any IT infrastructure available. So I think we were, he was waiting for the determination today before approaching a meet with IT to see exactly what, you know, what, what a request might be there. But I will say that I don't think that there's a lot of opportunity to expand the services, but certainly need to reach out and make sure that what you're, what you're planning is going to work for you.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. And thanks, everybody. Sorry, I lost my voice this weekend in Saratoga. But if approved today, then I plan to put Amit in touch with Marty Lyon of Lyon Productions, who's going to be doing the broadcasting, we think, of the event.
Great. Do my fellow commissioners have any questions or comments for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Selle.
Sorry, the only question I have, Anne, is my understanding is that this is not going to have any allowance for spectators, is that correct? And so what is the plan to control, to control that aspect of the event?
No, I think that's, I think that's a really great question, Sarah. And so I would, I would direct that to Duffy, you know, the application, making it conditional upon what has been put in the application. It has been submitted as a non-spectator event and that the road closures and would largely, I think, keep it from being, promoting it as having spectators. I also think that Duffy has put something in the advertising. So I think it would be really great if we let Duffy kind of, he's trying to mitigate speculation, but I think it's probably impossible to keep, you know, everyone away. But I think that largely the event is trying very hard to not promote it.
Yeah, I'll just kind of piggyback on that. Kayla, great question. When, when Paul had asked that at one of the last meetings, said we'll approach it twofold. One, we'll, we'll put on all of our posters on the Facebook page, on our website, and at any crossroads we can, proactively to say that this is a no spectator event. We're not asking you not to come, we're telling you that this is a no spectator event. And then react, the geography of where we're doing the event, I think, yields a fair amount of isolation already, if you look at where those road closures are, as well as the terrain between, or let's say, east of the track. They'd really have to do some creative trudging to get down towards the track. And so if we have to have the announcer temporarily stop the event because somebody's getting too close, then we'll do that. I've seen before, and if we have to send a horse and rider out to encourage someone or a small party, like, hey, look, you're getting too close, there's no event fencing, this isn't safe, you're not allowed here, we'll, we'll do what we have to do. I really hope we don't have to go that route with our event and the community minds are, are, I don't want to say request, plays by the rules. But I'll also say that if they're 200 yards away, standing at a high vantage point of our community, there's not really much I can do about that to Anne's point. So we're going to focus on proactively messaging it accurately to set expectations. This is not a spectator event, you can't come, please don't come, please instead go watch it, and why we're trying to focus on all the broadcasting. And if we got to deal with a couple of bad apples, then I, I don't know what to tell you. We'll deal with that as, as we see fit, depending on what happens. Does that suffice?
Um, Kayla, I would also suggest that, I think you brought up a really good point that I hadn't put and considered in this, and that I could modify the permit. And I'm going to ask you to recall the, the Pac Burrow race, and not promoting having spectators was a, was, was a definite, wanted to be an outcome of that permit. And so we included it within the conditions of approval. And so what we could do is I could amend condition number two that talks about the number of events or a number of participants, and include in there that the event is not, is not promoting having spectators present. So just to kind of memorialize it and keep it consistent, I think that was a really good point, Kayla, because I think then we're, you know, we're just staying consistent with the other permits that we've done thus far and making sure that we're sending that same message, and then do the best that we can.
And this is Greg. I was thinking that maybe the wording might be that they are discouraging, not just not promoting it, but they're actually discouraging spectators.
That sounds great, Greg. I like, I like that even better. If, if, if the board likes that better.
Mr. Fiedler?
Yeah, so if we're done with the spectator question, I had a question about the MBT approval. And sorry, just for a new commissioner question, is that ultimately a county and BOCC approval of that? Or is it determined by the Mineral Belt Committee or spacing on the name? I'm just curious, like, who has to give that final approval on the MBT plan?
Um, yeah, I'll let Sarah, I'll give the floor to Sarah.
Well, I was, I was just trying to think of other events on the Mineral Belt that would go through the special permitting with the county. And I, I mean, I, it's a county facility, so I think that lies within the overall feedback of the referral agencies. And I, I rely on Public Works' feedback primarily for that, though, of course, the importance of Amber at Rec and the Mineral Belt Trail Committee giving us any of those community insights as well. That, that's been my experience.
Okay, so, so that'll ultimately come back to us with sort of a secondary recommendation?
Forwarded the board, the recommendation from the board, from the Mineral Belt Trail Board. And so, you know, that's, I did provide that. And I think, I think, though, there's been further talk since then, because I, and like, unfortunately, Howard is unavailable. But, you know, so I did, I provided that to the board, the, what the Mineral Belt's response was.
Okay, apologies for not reading that.
No.
For here. Okay, but, 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 but before the permit is like, before the event happens, whoa, whoa, will we have to meet again?
I think the idea is that this is it. So if we, if we want to impose restrictions, we should consider that and discuss now. And just so you know, Jeff, I pulled that email up. The concerns was, um, let's see. The rules of the trail, which were necessary in order to obtain the original grants to build the trail, are posted. Now, those no longer apply per the, the parameters and the timeframe of the grant funding. I think that, again, the, I think that it's re, I feel that it's reasonable to continue to not allow hoofed animals on the mineral belt for general use, especially through the summer season, when we, you know, we really have limited funds earmarked to maintain or repair the trail, other than sealing the trail as far as the asphalt goes. And it seems that Public Works' opinion is that there will not be damage with the snow on the trail.
I guess my only question when it comes to that, sorry, Jeff, is a question about the grooming of the trail. Is there an anticipated plan to have that groomed, like, immediately following the event? Or what does that look like, and who's going to be responsible for paying for that grooming?
I kind of jump in here. Conversation that Michael and I, and I don't know that he's joining on the call, looking through, I don't see him, so I don't want to speak on his behalf. But as I had mentioned before as well, if there's some type of a deposit that y'all need, or if there's something on Monday morning, it's operated this way in the past with the city. And we've never, we've never had that, that bridge crossed, you know? It's absolutely our goal, and with all the players, the city and county being the biggest ones, to really leave no trace. I recall that, that Michael had said several different times, you know, Duff, we can put snow back on the Mineral Belt Trail as needed. And we can have Eddie run the groomer over it, where I think I believe the words he'd used. You know, certainly our plan on Sunday, immediately following the event, is just part of overall strike and cleanup, hey, somebody go check the intermediate school parking lot with a five-gallon bucket and shovel as needed, somebody go check the Mineral Belt Trail, somebody take a general walk around any other areas. There, there's a lot of different competitors who have been doing this for 10, 20 years that are good helpers as well. And so I'll, I'll seek to sedimentality of, we really got to leave no trace. We don't want kids coming to school when they come next, and there being remnants of horses in the parking lot or on the Mineral Belt trailer, or anywhere besides at the fairgrounds.
And just for clarity, Duffy, the, is it the snowmobile club that brings out their groomers, which groomers come out, and that short section of Mineral Belt would be, would be taken care of? And then Public Works has to move all that snow back and forth? And so if there's concern about staff time, it, it's probably, I mean, it's equidistant to dumping it back at the dumping area across the community field, or dumping it on the mineral belt for a, for a grooming. And this, I did not understand this to be an additional cost or request to, like, the snowcat contractors that we have.
Me neither. I didn't understand that there was any extra cost. I think if anything from a staff hours, we should see an overall reduction in it because of the proximity of the track to, and I will not go into this any further, our secret location of where we get the snow from. But I wasn't under the understanding that Mike, Michael had thought there'd be any additional cost faced to return. And I'll be real frank, guys, I don't think that the Mineral Belt Trail is going to sustain significant, depending on temperatures, if it's cold, I would say it would sustain nearly no damages to it or damage to the snow surface. If it's warm, yeah, it might get a couple of hoof punches through there. Certainly shouldn't do anything to the Mineral Belt Trail, but our, our objective is to return it to original condition at no, no additional cost.
So just, so on the, on the sort of access for other users, or Duffy or others who've been in this conversation, and I'm just curious, I mean, are you thinking of completely asking skiers or bike or whoever, you know, to go around? Or could there be a staff person? I mean, my recollection is that the horses, you know, I don't know how, like, every 10 minutes a horse goes by on the return. I mean, I wonder if you could actually just have, like, a staff person, like, hold a skier? You know what I mean? Just like that kind of traffic control, so, so no one's even being blocked. It's like, hey, can you just wait two minutes while this horse comes through? Like, you know?
Exactly what Plan A is, Jeff, that's, that's, we don't want anybody to have their personal recreational desires for that weekend. You know, there's bound to be somebody that didn't get the, that, you know, that didn't know. And they show up. And, and yeah, of course, we'd love to say, hey, you go hang out for a second, here's side benefit, you might get to watch a run. And all right, there's a big clear area, horse traffic's only going one way. So just keep an eye on your six, and go ahead and continue on the Mineral Belt Trail, watch out if there is any horse anywhere on it, or any, any hoof prints. And you'll encounter the start, right as you cross McWethy, where you're taking your skis off, nobody cross-country skis across. And if they have their, their dogs, then we'll just have to really make sure that they're being monitored. And there'll be plenty of other volunteers and competitors and riders and so on and so forth in that start area to say, oh, to say, oh, hey, here comes somebody walking through. I really don't, don't perceive it being, I perceive it being a similar volume of interaction as County Road 36 for the five residents that are out there. We're going to maintain that egress for road and we'll use it a couple of times a day for the three hours that we're there.
And then, then, so, so this sounds great. And I'm, I mean, don't need to blabber this, as like it's been thought through. On, on, on seven, the second bullet then, I might just suggest that we say the event should be responsible for signage, like, and event staff. You know, because people aren't, I mean, people aren't going to stop and read the sign. I don't know.
I think staff prevails over a sign anyways. Why stop and read a sign when somebody's standing there telling you what to do?
Yeah.
You know, and we're happy to do both.
Yeah, I think it would be great to, to sort of like have, have an actual person sort of helping manage that. If that seems reasonable.
Uh, reasonable for us, I think maybe we'll station two, I was writing down, you know, I don't know that I'll have somebody stationed at the County Road Four roadblock. Because there's just not a real need for that person so far away from the event to be there. I think if anything, somebody's going to be in the runout and watching County Road Four if a car were to move the barricade and try to drive around. As well as where the riders come into the intermediary school, one volunteer, one of them at County Road 36 slash the church. The roadblock doesn't start till after the church's parking lot and West Third Street. So I don't know if somebody had a question or wanted to know, hey, what's going on? That's what those guys get asked all the time. So we'll put one person to manage that CR 36 and church kind of closure. And then I'll probably put two people up at West Six so that God fearing there's pool users and stool faculty and a Mineral Belt Trail user all at the same time. We can effectively manage that.
That sounds pretty.
Yeah, sorry, thanks Sarah. Michael and I talked about that too, the, the landfill will be open that whole time. So we didn't see any need for us to move the containers down by the old football field. We'll just say it's closed.
Yeah, my, that's my comment, just reiterating that, the reduction, the attempt at reducing the traffic in that area by closing the drop off site for the landfill or the recycling that day, those days.
Closed from call it, you know, Friday until Sunday at 5:00 PM, Sunday at 5:00, that evening you could still go back out, we should be wrapped up by then.
I did ask Mabel and she was going to check with Michael if the digital signage could maybe go out ahead for County Road Four and the 10th Street extension, maybe a day ahead. So residents, you know, we have a lot of residents impacted on County Road Four to anticipate to route a little differently ahead of time. And so she was going to check with Michael because I think just maybe creating some situational awareness ahead of time that the closures are coming might really help the community anticipate them.
And I think that's.
That's a great idea. Thanks, Anne.
And that's a great idea. And I'll try to with the newspaper or anything that we can, I think you hit the nail on the head. Anything we can do to give a heads up, dump your recycling before that weekend? Plan that it's going to take you maybe a few extra minutes to get in or out of town going around that area? Anything we can do to proact, stay away from that area from Friday through Sunday, please? Anything we can do on that front is going to help ensure that we run the safest event, ideally for the one time that we have to do it weekend.
Are there additional questions that staff need for approval? It sounds like we have some corrections or additions, revisions on your current list. Commissioner Marcella, Commissioner Fiedler, do you all have concern with considering an approval of the event right now?
I'm good.
I'm good too.
I'm sorry, I believe is that I have direction to change to discouraging spectators. And then changing that there will be a person positioned on the mineral belt to assist other users with safely crossing in between the activity. So I will amend those two and get those to you for, for action, so.
Excellent.
Right.
Uh, well, I will entertain a motion to direct staff to move forward permitting the ski drawing event for 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Other staff, I saw Michael Irwin jumped on a little later here, see Amber's on, any, anything we missed in discussion? Okay.
Not what I heard. Sorry, I was late. I was on the phone, on the phone with the Forest Service, so.
No problem, Michael. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, staff and everyone for the work. Thank you Duffy for all this. I know you worked hard with staff to come up with an alternative. And as we are going to experience, I think through 2021 in, you know, juggling all these special events that we're having, it's going to be, it's going to be a, a process full of anxiety, I'm sure, for, for event or race coordinators. But I, I really appreciate what everybody's put into this and the process seems to be getting a bit easier every time. So thank you, Anne. Thank you, Paul. Thanks Duffy.
Yeah, if I could just, Anne, thank you so much. You're, you're just huge in this process, kind of just forcefully slam dunking everything through the proper channels as I had never done any of it before. You know, Michael, thanks so much for your great idea in the beginning, commissioners, your support, Amber, your support. I hope we can get flag pull, that we're raising a flag on that Saturday, March 6th for the national anthem. I don't know if Joe Manley Jr. will rock it again this year or not. But I can't say thanks for your bravery and boldness to, to help us continue a 73 year tradition in our community. And it, and it remains something we're well aware of that things can change in the next few weeks. You know, we are all paying very close attention to our fellow competitors. We are just around in Saratoga. My son Brennan and I leave for Pinedale on Friday and the following weekend is meeker, a week off and then us. So I hope that things remain consistent. Thank you so much to all of you guys again. I don't want to take up any more of your time. Giddy up.
Thanks. All right, um, and next on our agenda is a discussion regarding Senate Bill 20217. We have invited, and I see here, our district attorney, Heidi McCollum. We have the sheriff present. I know she was on from the beginning, so I'll just shout out, make sure she's, she's tuned in at the moment. Give her a minute to, to get back. And so we have a short list, um, let me pull this up. Sorry, guys. I'm not sure where that short list is of, uh, but basically the, the, the purpose of today's conversation around Senate Bill 20217 is to get on the same page and be sure that between the commissioners, the sheriff's office and the DA's office, we are all interpreting our understanding of timelines, our needs to address what we, the other requirements listed in Senate Bill 217. And agree on some sort of approach and plan to hitting, hitting some, some of those items and those deadlines. And so I wanted to go over first, um, the, well, how, I, I guess I'll ask the group, I, I sent out overview notes. How, how should we go through the act as far as some of those things that were law enforcement agency responsibilities? You know, other responsibility on the post board for peace officer to, to maintain records and reporting. There were certain aspects of, you know, restrictions or prohibitions on use of force. How should we start with the list here?
Hi, Sarah, I'm, I, it makes sense to me just to really kind of start at the beginning. I know you made some notes in, uh, in the legislative language itself. And so start at the beginning and just move through it. That sort of seems to make it, make sense to me in that way we won't miss anything.
Okay, would it be helpful if I shared the, the document? The act or the notes?
Uh, either or, I thought your notes were pretty, you know, pretty spot on. And there were some, you know, good questions in there or comments, so.
Okay, I can go back and forth between the two. I think, I, I, I feel like I was looking, I was reviewing the document with this kind of conversation in mind. And so I know there's a ton of other kind of details that each agency outlined in the act might need to be responsible for, but, um, oops. Okay. Can everybody see those? Okay, I've got a thumbs up. Great, um, all right, so, so this, uh, and I actually, I should check in, Sheriff Reyes, are you?
Did you hear me?
I can, I can, you're very soft, it's very soft.
How about, um, turn up the volume?
That's better, much better. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, I know you were on from the beginning. I didn't know if you had stepped away, so just want to make sure. Alrighty, um, so let's see, going through the law enforcement, bigger pieces, at least that I, I had pulled. And we can certainly, I think we should add to this based on everybody's understanding of what needs to be addressed. The big one that was a bigger, or at least an initial investment in cost that we have engagement with is the requirement for the camera or dash cams needed and in, we need to be in compliance by July 2023. So we are, in theory, we will be in compliance once we receive those.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I, I just had a question for clarity on that though, because it didn't, I, I wasn't quite sure that there was clear language in the act that said the cameras or the dash cams, unless it was and dash cams. The sheriff, do you or the DA have any clarity on that?
So Sarah, I think I can jump in here and I actually did have that same question. Quite frankly, I think it really comes down to the placement of a comma as in that particular sentence I know that you're talking about. Because if it's placed about five words previously, it means something vastly different from where it currently is. And it is confusing with where it currently is. I will indicate that right now, the, the main agency that this would really apply to across the state, it applies to all agencies, but State Patrol is the largest law enforcement agency in the state. And they don't have body cams at the moment. So we were originally reading it to think that it was an either or. I have confirmation just as of this morning that it is not either or. And that it, CSP believes that they are required to have both dash cam and on person or body camera. So the, their troopers are already now being required to wear the body worn camera in addition. I think that was kind of a long explanation, but I don't think it is either or. If they do have dash cam, that's great, but that does not substitute or take the place of the requirement for body cam.
Okay, great. And then the other one, I think the other comment made or noted through the read of the act, there was language in there that said anyone who's in contact with the public and I, it was something to the effect of, effective unless cameras are present, you know, in the facility or there's other monitoring happening. Is that a correct interpretation or of us all?
Can you tell me where in the, the act that you're looking, what page?
I.
This is Chris, I was going to ask the same thing because I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right provision for the, the prior comment about whether it was both or one, either the, the body camera or the dash camera. Because I'm looking at the, the act and it, the, I guess it's 24-31-902. Two, or 1A2, capital A, appears to say that they, peace officer shall wear and activate a body worn camera or dash camera, comma, if the officer's vehicle is equipped with a dash camera. I don't see where it says the and. Heidi, maybe you were looking at something different.
So sure, Chris, thanks. But if you go up into the, the paragraph just above that, 1A Roman numeral one. Okay. In pertinent part says that law enforcement and CSP shall provide body worn cameras for each peace officer within.
Okay, I thought you were saying that they had to have, I missed that in terms of the conversation. I thought in terms of having to have both of them running at the same time. So, okay.
No, I don't think they have to have both at the same time. I, I mean, that's great if they do, but I don't, I don't read that as a requirement.
Okay, so yeah, thank you. And that's why I think it's, it's good to, to say where you're looking from. Sure.
And then Heidi, the, in subsection D here, the provisions of this subsection do not apply to the jail peace officers or staff of the local law enforcement agency if the jail has video cameras.
Sure.
So I suppose that was just, just in the jail. I don't know if that means outside. You know, our courthouse now has a new system overall for overall monitoring. So do we think that we are covered in terms of, you know, meeting people at the desks as they come in to the courthouse?
So when I read this, I think the courthouse is a separate, well, when you say courthouse.
Yeah.
Right, let's be clear, do you mean the courts or do you mean the jail portion of the, the courthouse or the sheriff's office portion?
I am, I mean to say the jail portion and the sheriff's office and the dispatch area. Yep.
Sure. And so as long as there is video in that, there are, are video capabilities in those areas, then I, I think that that is, I read that as being sufficient.
Then my question to that is, it's, it states in there that law enforcement agencies have to issue a body worn camera to each peace officer who interacts with members of the public. So if a jailer is interacting with a member of the public, and it, it talks about the requirement for the body worn camera to be activated during, during any, any interaction with the public initiated by the peace officer, whether consensual or non-consensual for the purpose of enforcing the law or investigating possible violations of the law. Would that be applicable to jailers then?
So Kayla, where are you reading that?
That was in a, in a presentation that we had received.
That language is actually, I, it's in the, the paragraph I was looking at previously.
Okay.
That the 2431902 to A. Sure, the, uh, or 1 Roman numeral 2A, it's a, when responding to a call or interaction, I see it there.
Right.
And it talks about turning it off.
Sure, go ahead, Chris. My record, my reading of that paragraph, Roman numeral 2A is that, that it's when the peace officers, when they're responding to a call for service or during interaction with the public initiated. when they're responding to a call for service or during interaction with the public initiated by the peace officer, whether consensual or non-consensual for the purpose of enforcing the law or investigating possible violations of the law. When someone is being booked into the jail, I don't know that that is enforcing the law or investigating possible violations. That's simply ministerial, processing someone into the jail. And I think that paragraph, Roman numeral 2D, which is the paragraph applicable to the jail, is the exception to that. Says it does not apply to jail peace officers if the jail has video cameras, except when they're doing tasks that require an anticipated use of force, including cell extractions and restraint chairs, but to book someone in and to, you know, obtain a fingerprint or process whatever appropriate paperwork. My reading of paragraph Roman numeral 2D does not require a body warm camera to be turned on while someone is being fingerprinted or in essence, just a a routine booking into a jail.
Heidi, this is Amy.
Hi, Amy.
Hey, just a question, because often routine booking doesn't turn into a routine booking. For example, we just had an individual that was turning himself in, just run from courtroom staff and had been tackled outside the building. I mean, is that something that in the fifth, that we could argue why they didn't have cameras on?
Well, I think, and there are some provisions in here, and I can't remember exactly where they are, but there are provisions that that, you know, say that, you know, unless there is an immediate need, right, to, I, I, I don't know if it's to restrain someone or to prevent injury to the general public. You know, I, I would certainly argue on behalf of, you know, a sheriff's deputy if if they were trying to protect the public, and this all happened in, in just an instant. And I would certainly not think it would be appropriate, or I I guess, how do I want to say it? I don't think that it would be inappropriate for an officer to not take the time to say, wait a minute, stop, I'm about to give chase. I guess I better turn my camera on before I actually go to protect the public. I don't think that's what was intended by this.
But or even as I think the commissioners are reading it, that the deputies may, the jail deputies may not need a camera, so therefore they wouldn't have one on.
Right, that being said, and and if someone is being booked into the the jail and they're being fingerprinted, I think the question would be, is there anywhere within that facility where they wouldn't be on a video camera? And if so, I mean, I, you know, can they just pretend to, right, comply with having fingerprints taken and then run out of the building? And my understanding is that they're not allowed, that they wouldn't be able to leave the facility, simply because they would be in the jail. Am I correct?
Yeah, they would be in the jail. I'm I'm just worried about, because in our current facility, there's not, one, there's no audio, two, there's not cameras in every specific area of the jail, as it's non-functional.
Right. Okay, and I I guess one, one thing and then all.
No problem.
Yeah, sort of be quiet. I think, Amy, and that was a good point that you brought up, that if there isn't audio on what happens at, in in the jail, that's certainly problematic to some degree, because you really, you don't, you might not understand why certain movements are, you know, are being made, right? If someone makes a sudden movement in a certain direction, either to or away from an inmate, what would prompt that? And the only thing we have to go on is what everyone says, and stories could be certainly could be different. So, I mean, in those circumstances, yeah, a body cam, which would be recording the audio on there, would be of huge benefit to everyone.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sheriff Reyes, I presume with the number count for the camera purchase, that jailers are, you've, you've covered jailers to have body cams? Okay, so this shouldn't.
Because I thought that that would be an issue, just by, you know, because we don't have the audio. And oftentimes, what we think is going to be routine isn't, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, my interpretation of that is that we're covered then, and and the, the, the the rule should be to have your camera on perhaps, you know, more often than not, so that you're not caught. Not complying, perhaps, but I I suppose you'll figure that. Commissioner Marcela?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Sheriff Reyes if what that meant for jailers when they're transporting, will they have to wear their, or keep their cameras on the entire time that, when they're transporting an inmate?
That's a good question. That's something that I need to sit down and talk with the DA about oftentimes, because there is that partition. They can't, you know, the speech of the inmate wouldn't be heard necessarily, but a lot of times it would be helpful depending on their actions, and so that's something that we definitely need to address.
Okay, so it seems that we are well on our way for full compliance and regarding the cameras, body cams. I I suppose it's just a matter of perhaps Sheriff Reyes, you know, exercising the use of those in daily activities and, you know, appropriate activities. I don't know, I I don't know that we need to know, but I think, you know, I don't know if you'd have a checklist of all those things and an outline for your, you know, deputies on when and where they have to use those, but it, we have about three years to to comply as far as the language reads currently.
And there will be, there will be policies and procedures around the cameras, because this bill is very specific. The way I interpret it, any officer initiated contact with the public needs to be recorded. Therefore, that would be in our policies.
Yeah. I think as an asset too for the county, did you plan on putting any kind of response? I, well, I suspect the the board's request would be to also have some sort of responsibility on that that hardware as county and sheriff office property for your folks, so we can work together on developing what that acknowledgement looks like.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, like a acknowledgement that they're in seat of it, receipt of their.
I suppose that, but I I'm thinking more just of it as a county asset and acknowledging, you know, they have a piece of equipment that's worth X amount of money, and they're, they're expected to treat it with care and return it, and, you know.
No, it goes without saying.
Excellent, okay. And I think, Amy, you mentioned like having that contact. That was another, just, I think, one of my bigger questions on like the reporting pieces that will be required of the local law enforcement agencies. What, how do you define that contact? Is it just, is it any contact that you make, or is it in in with the intent to enforce the law? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I interpreted is any officer initiated contact and what their perception is about demographics. And I'm going to have a discussion with E-Force in March, because they're the ones that are record management system. And I know that they're tackling this for other departments in the state. What does that look like? And we're hoping to get legislation to define a little bit better of what they were intending. Like I had said before, demographics, that can mean so many different things. Are we going off of the way the federal government classifies individuals as far as demographics? What exactly are they looking for in this bill?
This is Chris. I would just mention that the the bill itself has definitions in it that provide some guidance as to what contacts mean. If you're trying to figure out, you know, the extension of how far down or or how either broad or narrowly that needs to be defined, then yeah, I agree, that's something that will probably be a work in progress as enforcement, implementation and enforcement of the bill is handled. Heidi?
There you go. Yeah, thanks, Chris. I do agree with that, and it's a pretty burdensome reporting requirement, but if that's what's in there, then that's what's in there. It's gonna take a lot of time. And I agree, I I read it the same way that Sheriff Reyes does, and the definition is right in there, I think in the the first couple pages of the act.
So, so I guess, and maybe I don't need to understand this in my position, but that that definition says for the purpose of enforcing the law or investigating possible violations of the law. So this is not, and I think I'm asking this just to, you know, relieve unnecessary burden potentially, is not, you know, walking up and down the streets and and saying hi to folks or being called into a store to be asked a question perhaps on other law enforcement. This is, this needs some more, I don't know, justification or initiation from an officer. Is that right?
Yeah, and I think that that's one of the things that we're hoping that legislation will clear up.
Okay.
You know, if we stop somebody on the street, or even somebody approaches us, oftentimes those contacts, what we think are just gonna be initial, hi, how are you doing, turn into something else. So I I really think that it's gotta be defined a little bit better, and I know that they're working on that.
There's some post-board reporting and publishing of a dashboard on information for folks as far as like training compliance and termination or any acts on any peace officers in suspension or revocation of certifications. The, I think the, the, kind of the tone of our previous conversation was, you know, we we will have to, you know, award any kind of court request or public records request. But in reading this more carefully, it says upon a report of officer misconduct. That's when that triggers the need to review footage, redact certain information as outlined, and make that footage available. Is that a correct interpretation?
And Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I interpret that is if anyone comes in, and and not just, I know this specific section section refers to officer misconduct, but if there is, for example, a domestic violence case at a neighbor's house, and that person would, someone wants to come and get information, get video, the general public can now get access to that. Am I interpreting that wrong, and where we need to have all of the information redacted for those type of requests?
That's my understanding of it as well, Sheriff.
Okay. And and that was one of the big, where I had brought up before, where we needed to really make sure that we had really good reduction software, because there's lots of elements of cases that the general public, such as juvenile, maybe victim information, maybe it's a sex assault, that they don't need because their people are protected as being the victim.
Well, and Sheriff, in addition to that, and I'll let the commissioners know as well, that the district attorney's office is under ethical rules 3.6 and 3.8 to ensure certain guarantees to the defendant. And, you know, there's all kinds of information that cannot be given out to the public about a defendant in any criminal case, so. That, that's part of those redactions that that absolutely would need to be made if someone were to request any video.
So is this, is this, oh, sorry, Sheriff, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna have Heidi clear up. In our previous discussion, the board was under the impression that that was for redaction, that was the district attorney's responsibility. And I was sharing that that's our responsibility.
So, yes, and sort of, yes. It it ultimately is the responsibility of the district attorney, because anything that happens in court, we are responsible for. Whether law enforcement did or didn't do something during an investigation, it ultimately comes down to the district attorney's responsibility. So let me give an example. If, you know, historically, someone has been on scene, we had a case in Eagle County, and there was a was a attempted murder case, all hands on deck, everyone went out, they were looking in the the town for this particular individual. The chief of police actually took two snapshots, two screenshots on his phone from a Facebook page, and went around to some of the local hotels, you know, say, have you seen this person? Have you seen this person? This is literally within, you know, an hour of a woman, you know, almost being killed. In the height of everything, those two photographs didn't make it into discovery until about 45 days prior to trial. Had we gone to trial, and those two photographs hadn't been in there, that would have been a discovery violation on behalf of the district attorney's office, even though I had zero knowledge that those photographs existed on a police officer's phone. It's my responsibility to give everything to the defense. So in answering the question here that we're talking about, if something ultimately doesn't get redacted by law enforcement, and we move forward with that case to trial, and there is anything that is violative of a defendant's rights, statutory or constitutional, that will be held against the district attorney's office in the form of probably a a discovery violation. So ultimately, it does come down to the DA being responsible for what the police do, or at least answering for it in court.
But in case preparation, saying that same specific example, there's video that went along with it, just say that there was video. The agency, the law enforcement agency prepares that and gives that to the district attorney, correct?
Correct.
And that's where some of the confusion was, the board was under the impression that the DA's office would meet the burden of extracting and redacting any footage before it went to the DA, before it goes to court. And I was explaining that it's the reverse, we do that, and then we get presented to you, although the DA is ultimately responsible in court.
Right, and the way I really see this playing out is that the law enforcement agencies will work with the DA's office in ensuring that appropriate information has been redacted and that appropriate information has been left in.
Okay, so so any, anything that's involved in an investigation doesn't just immediately get over, handed over to the DA's office for then that review and or appropriate preparation of the material or the footage, because that that was my misunderstanding.
So Commissioner Mudge, I I think it depends. I mean, it can, it depends on the case that that that's there. I will tell you that the DA's office does not have the bandwidth or the human resources to do 100% of the redaction for the 17 or 18 different law enforcement agencies in this district. And so we will be relying on the agencies themselves in, I I don't want to say routine cases, because no two cases are ever the same, but in maybe less complex matters. matters, matters that are very straightforward.
Okay. And any redaction, it sounds like needs to be done, I mean, would be redone, would be done in a, uh, response to a request or an investigation. Right? You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be redacting information across all footage collected. That's pretty burdensome.
Correct. The, the redaction would be, would come from, or yes, would, would be, would be triggered by, um, uh, someone, a, a victim or a member of the public requesting video.
But, but we have to store all that so that we, you know, in a way that we can retrieve it by date and incident or whatever, so that we could do. Yeah. So it's huge data storage, but not necessarily having to redact every second of every officer's day.
I know that you had in here, I'm sorry Heidi, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I think that's a fair assessment, Commissioner Fieldler.
I know, Sarah, that you had in here, um, some retention, record retention flagged. What is the retention on the footage? How long does the sheriff have to keep that?
Heidi, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, Sheriff, if you can, and then I, I can probably jump in.
So, it's very case dependent on how long we have to keep information. For example, traffic stops, most agencies will probably keep that for ninety days. However, a case where there's sexual assault or where something's probably gonna go to trial, that can be an infinite amount of time. Especially if the person has, is likely to wanna go to the appeal process.
So i- it's based on current retention policies per those incidents?
Yes, and the type of case, so the sheriff is correct. So for instance, if it's a homicide, um, you know, at least the, the DA's record retention, it could be different from the sheriff's office, you know, in, in a homicide or a sex assault case, we can never get rid of any of those cases ever. So they're kept forever.
And Sheriff, the, do we, um, I understand from the contract with the cameras, the software is included in that, the redaction software, correct?
Correct. Sorry, I thought I had it unmuted.
That's okay. And then, uh, the, where does that get stored? On-site? Or?
So they will be downloading, when the officers come in, they will be downloading their cameras at the end of each shift. And it will get stored to a cloud. And then it will be depending on what type of case and what we have to attach to it, how long it's stored and retained.
Would that be with the same, is that with the same company that's providing the software, or is that, okay?
Yes, it is. So it's gonna be quite intensive on our end going through and attaching and deciding what goes with what and how long we're gonna keep it. And we're gonna have this set because we don't have the body cam systems now. Deciding where and how long we're keeping what footage. And as the DA pointed out, sex assaults, homicides, um, those are things that we keep forever.
And again,
Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just gonna say again, it, we have, you know, the July twenty-twenty-three to iron out all those details, it sounds like.
And I just wanna make it available to any of the commissioners, uh, that there are multiple agencies within our judicial district who do have body cams and have these processes in place and have storage policies, retention policies. Um, that I'm happy, if, if you would like, I'm happy to, you know, reach out to those, um, agencies if need be, uh, for you to sort of take a look at some of that, uh, that information.
That would be great. I would love to see that.
Okay. Um.
Alright.
Can I ask a question on their, on, sorry, not, maybe this is too much in the weeds on retention. I'm curious. So that made sense on, you know, where there's actually like an investigation or an active case. But I'm curious if there's anything, I didn't see it in the bill, but for just being able to be responsive to citizen complaints, um, is there a retention requirement for being able to respond to those? Like, is, I didn't see it in the bill, but you know, like, like, I mean, so, so, so if it's not, if it's about to be deleted, you know, based on the retention policy for cases or investigations, do we, i- 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 is there any required retention period, ju- again, just to be responsive to those general complaints?
It's not enclosed in this bill that each department has their own retention regarding, regarding complaints. From my experience, oftentimes where there's gonna be a complaint, it will be something that's gonna be, need to be kept to move forward in the court process. I mean, not that that's a hundred percent, but oftentimes, um, that's the case and we would be keeping that anyways, that will be a policy that we're addressing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um. I think, I mean, I feel like that was one of the bigger questions, and then again, for me, reading more thoroughly through and kind of identifying some of those other aspects that are un, I mean, I, I, I will say unrelated to the body cameras, but I think the body cameras is exactly the enforcement tool that is, you know, being required to ensure some of these other, um, other, uh, prohibitions or, or other directives to peace officers and law enforcement agencies as far as, how to use discretion on using physical force or non-violent forces and, um, and, uh, other activity. Um, is it worth going, do we want to go through the rest of those? Have we, I guess my question should be, should we, have we exhausted what, um, you know, the long-term requirements looking into twenty-twenty-three will look like? For us, and right now I am looking at that thinking, okay, we've, we've, we have a, uh, purchase um, of cameras and through that then, perhaps the next steps is just agreeing among us as, as to when we might, uh, communicate again on, you know, keeping each other informed on new policies or activity regarding that. Um, and how those are gonna be unfolded and how they're affecting, you know, the sheriff's office and the DA's office. But other than that, it doesn't, you know, without knowing what those logistics and those mechanics really are going through, um, I, I don't see any other action to take currently.
Commissioner Mudge, can I just ask a question?
Please.
Um, I, is there ETA that, um, that the commissioners have in purchasing the body cams and, and the storage, I mean, capacity and, and really have everything up and running?
Heidi, I'll answer that. Um, we start purchasing Axon in October. Um, in the last two weeks, we've gotten the cameras and we're waiting for an Axon representative to come out and set up the downloading station and go through the training on them. I've already started with the policies and procedures around what we're gonna need to implement.
Great, thank you Sheriff. I just didn't want, I, I didn't know where we were in that, um, uh, timeline, and I didn't want to wait until, you know, twenty-twenty-three to really do this, and I know we have that much time, but, you know, I think the sooner we do get body cams for all of our officers, then, you know, the better off everyone is, is, is really gonna be, and, you know, we're gonna be able to protect everyone, defendants, victims and officers.
Yeah, I think, Heidi, just to kind of add on to this, and, and Jeff, I think you were on the CCI Steering Committee meeting where we had that presentation from, um, Arapahoe County about, about the body cams and Senate Bill two-seventeen. Um, excuse me, they, um, really, most agencies are moving forward with this pretty quickly to be in compliance by twenty-twenty-three, but not only because of that, but because there's so many things within the bill that are undefined, that they just wanna be able to be ahead of the curve if something were to happen, so. Um, there's some circumstances in there with, um, you know, the, the, um, waiver for, um, you know, any kind of, of governmental liability, uh, immunity or qualified immunity and that type of thing that has already been waived, and so I think that there's, there's a lot of pressure to get cameras up and running because, um, there's so many holes in the legislation, um, that they have to be able to have some kind of defense with somebody that can just make a, make a complaint and, and push civil litigation, um, onto a county or an agency. And so, um, they did talk a little bit about funding from the state and it sounded like they were going to try to allocate three million dollars um, of state funding for counties to apply to use towards the cost of cameras. But they were saying that in Arapahoe County, it was gonna cost them two and a half million dollars to implement this just in Arapahoe County, so that money's not gonna go very far. Um, and counties have a pretty slim chance of having any kind of funding from the state. Um, so I don't, I mean, I have a tendency to agree with, with Heidi that it's, I think it's at least better to take baby steps into um, getting familiar with having the body cams on and at least starting to have some of those records in place before twenty-twenty-three.
And I completely agree with you, Kayla, that's been the sentiment with the Sheriff's Association. Um, just because of all the loopholes that there are in the legislation, counties are now at a bigger liability than ever before, as well as officers. And it's just a safeguard for everybody.
Right, and I, I have a, I know there was a, a letter sent earlier this month that went early February, it was from, uh, the CCI, um, the Colorado Fraternal Order of Police, the County Sheriffs of Colorado, the CDAC, Colorado Municipal League, a, a number of different agencies, and they were, it was to the Joint Budget Committee really urging support of that three million dollar request from the Department of Public Safety. Uh, and so I don't know if the JBC has approved that as of yet, but I, it's, it's sort of hanging out there and, right, while, right, like Mr. Marcela said, it, it with two and a half million being required for, right, Arapahoe County alone, I don't know what that's gonna leave for for Lake County or how that might be a portion, but every little bit would certainly help.
Yeah, that, they did present that letter in, in our CCI meeting, um, that CCI had signed on to that with, with several entities um, urging support of, of that money, um, for any county, but when they did talk through that presentation, it sounds like that money is intended, at least from talking to Summit County BOCC, intended more for those rural, very rural, you know, eastern plain counties that just don't have the revenue generation that, that we have, to be able to cover the cost of those cameras, and so that money will likely be, um, eaten up quickly, like really, really fast.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, um, so I don't have the screen sharing anymore on the notes, but do we want to, is there a benefit to going through some of the other requirements, um, that are laid out by the act? Um, for me, I think it just appears that, again, as kind of all of it is maybe just, uh, revamping and bolstering of, uh, policies and, you know, day-to-day procedures and having, you know, the sheriff's office and deputies and everyone that needs to be responsible for all of those items, um, exercising that, um, in a day-to-day. So I don't, I mean, personally, I don't think I, I need any more clarity unless there are some things that would be beneficial to talk through um, further between the three of us here, DA, Sheriff's Office and BOCC. Mr. Feedler?
Yeah, thank, I mean, thanks for asking that. I guess on, just on the body camera and the video and retention stuff, one, one question I still had is sort of what is currently included in the Axon contract? Uh, um, as I looked at it, it, it looks like it has, and, and, and Sheriff Reyes, I think you said this, so the, the contract includes the data storage. Um, and looking at the Axon stuff, they sort of claim to like help you, that, you know, they have some software that helps with the redaction, but it, my understanding then is that the current Axon contract wouldn't do, doesn't do any of the redaction for us, and we still need to figure out sort of what resources or contract or internal staffing, et cetera, we would need to do down the road to do the actual redaction, is that right?
So the redaction would need to be done by somebody in my office. We did purchase the the capabilities of being able to, the software to redact
Hmm.
the, the images, but yeah, that's gonna take a body to do that.
Yeah, okay.
And Commissioner Feidler, I, I did speak a little bit with Commissioner Mudge about this, I, I think a couple of weeks ago, sort of, um, the issue of contracting out that, the redactions. And I just wanna let, you know, you know, what, what complications that would add to a, uh, a prosecution of a case. So there would be a chain of custody issue that information went from law enforcement to a non-law enforcement contracted private company. Um, and then, you know, that person, that company, they would have to be subpoenaed in, they would have to be, they would become a witness. I just, I, that is, from my opinion, that's far more problematic in the long run than whatever time savings it might give all of us upfront.
Yeah, I can, that, okay, thanks for, for tackling that, cuz yeah, I could, I mean, I, I can understand that, like, you'd be like contracting out, like, your evidence room, you know, like,
Right.
like, it's like, really?
Yeah, and, and I'm pretty sure that's a violation of, uh, of a defendant's rights right there. We don't, we certainly don't want to do that.
I guess that, that brings another question up for me, though. When, when do we have to be prepared to respond to requests like this or accept requests like this? If we, is it twenty-twenty-three?
I, I guess that's my question is if we have the cameras and we're starting to use the cameras and keep the footage recorded on the cameras, then, then that's something that we would be responsible for in, in having that technician prepare and hand over for a case. Is that a correct assumption? In, in having that technician prepare and hand over for a case. Is that a correct assumption?
So my reading, I want to make sure that I'm taking a look at the correct section of the bill. I do believe that that is correct, that everything under twenty-four thirty-one nine oh-two. That that. Takes effect in July of twenty twenty-three. And so I believe that the redaction portion, I'm just scanning through it right now. But I believe the redaction portion of that bill is under that section. And that entire section. Nine oh-two. Takes place, I have to get to the, I think, second to the last page of it, of the bill. That last section, yeah, nine oh-two takes effect July one twenty twenty-three. So I don't think that there is anything wrong with, you know, if, if the policy is to provide that. Video prior to that date, I don't think there is any. Anything that would preclude that. That's certainly not my decision. I think that would be a, a, a law enforcement decision, a sheriff's office or a commissioner's decision. But I don't think the requirement, Commissioner Marcella, is until July of twenty twenty-three. That's how I read it.
And, and here's a question I have for you, Heidi, and maybe we need to discuss it later. The minute we start using body cams, I know we're going to have defense subpoenaing that information.
When you say, sure, and Sheriff, I, I think, yeah, we can probably talk about this later. Because what I think you're asking is what gets turned over to the defense?
Well, if there is a body cam footage, say, for instance, we're ready to go and we use it starting in April. We come up and we have a case, I get, and the defense. Knows that where our offices are now wearing body cams, I guarantee you that that will be a part of discovery.
Well, so yes, it already is. Anything that, that, that the government does gets turned over to the defense immediately. So if there's a body cam, it gets turned over. So just right now, if there are any audio recordings or if there are any photographs that are taken. That automatically gets turned over to the defense. So the defendant is one hundred percent entitled to that. So the day. Lake County starts using body cam is the same day that the defendants will receive the body cam. Or be entitled to it, yes.
Right, and, and in theory, that would be, irregardless of what the start date of the bill is. We will have to redact certain information.
Correct.
Right, for investigations or cases, but not for. Public records requests.
Well, unless they do a Cora.
Well, no, I'm, I mean, Heidi, can you clarify on that? Because I think that's the distinction we'd like to make to understand what that might look like.
Sure, so I think that, so right now, let's, let's say that someone, an officer goes out and, and, you know, takes. Of takes seventeen photographs on scene. That information immediately goes into the officers or the deputies' report, that gets turned over to the DA's office. And then that, that immediately gets sent over to the defendant or the defense counsel as soon as they ask for it. They say, I want discovery. Then they get it. Everything that has been done in that case, whether it's video, audio, photographs. Whether it's. Reports that are written, whether it's, you know. Hard physical evidence, they have a, a chance to see a hundred percent of what. Law enforcement and the District Attorney's Office has in their possession. That happens immediately. Cora requests or requests under the. Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act, those are dealt with slightly differently. And whether or not those get turned over to a member of the general public or to the newspaper. Can depend upon where it is at in an investigation. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think so, but I think I just want to, I have a question for what that, that means for. Sheriff Fraz, when she was saying unless they do a Cora request. Because I think according to this bill, you can come in and just request body, body camera footage. And how, how has that changed? Like, what can you request now in a, in a Cora request?
So, well, I, I, I can, if I can just jump in here, I think the Cora, the, the term Cora, right, Colorado Open Records Act. Is. Is overused in, at least in terms of what the District Attorney's Office will turn over. We, there is all, there's very little that a Cora request covers for a District Attorney's Office during an investigation. A Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act is sort of a different ballgame. So there are two separate statutes under which people can request information. People use the term Cora, I think, as a blanket. Terminology. Right now. So if your question is, how does a, again, in general terms, a Cora request. What's the interplay going to be with then these general requests for the, the public to get video in, like I say, in the neighbor's domestic violence case? I haven't taken a close enough look at that to appropriately respond right now.
That makes sense. So Sheriff Fraz, then my question is, with the. Implementation of the body cams, let's say it is April first. Then what, what resources would you need? On that date of implementation with, with the body cams or like, are, is there. Would you implement the body cams and start, start recording footage and then storing footage or would you? Need to have somebody cataloging footage? I guess that, I guess that's kind of the question that Commissioner Feidler was, was asking too, I think, right, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah.
For instance, if we started April first, then we would need to be prepared to catalog and. And. Put the, the videos appropriate with the cases, because now, as Heidi pointed out, they're all part of evidence that has to go with the case. So that would be another person to help with that, because that in of itself, I think is going to be a full-time job.
And then Heidi, I think when, when you, you had spoken about this last, I think it was at the Democratic Central Committee. And, and talked about, you know, if there's like three officers on a case and all three of them have a body cam. And it's, you know, three hours long for them to respond to this incident. And then that mount, that amounts to like fifteen hours of body footage. Body camera footage. And you have to go through that as the prosecution. Is there, do you anticipate? A need or. Or. Any human capital to assist with, with going through the body cam footage to build a prosecution? Of the case?
So Commissioner, to answer your question in simplest terms, without question. You know, every attorney is required to review one hundred percent of the evidence that they have in any case. In order to determine whether or not it's a case that can be prosecuted, whether it should be prosecuted. And what additional investigation should or has to be done. So if I have a prosecutor who's in court on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And they're out of court on Thursday and Friday, and they have sixty cases and three hours of video average, or even two hours of video in sixty cases. That's a hundred and twenty hours. I don't know how they're going to get a hundred and twenty hours worth of, you know, movie time, so to speak. In to do just the basic due diligence, just to review the evidence. Reviewing evidence then does not include taking notes for, you know, contacting the officers for additional follow-up information or, you know. Reaching out to an officer and saying, hey, wait a minute, I heard the last part of that sentence, but I need to know what led up to that, what questions, you know, were asked. What did the neighbor say? So, y- yes, it is. I, I think I've. Sort of in jest said that, you know, DAs are going to become movie critics. Because. We now have the obligation of looking through all of that body camera, all of that footage from, you know, from different agencies. And, wait, it, we should have video camera, we should have the body cams to protect everyone out there. But the amount of time it. It takes to review body cam is exorbitant. It already is and, you know, this is gonna, it, it's going to be that much more. Time-consuming. So while I don't necessarily see that we're, you know, going to be requiring someone this week or next week or next month. You know, we've already submitted our budget for twenty twenty-one and, and as far as I know, I think we're stuck. So I have no idea how we're going to be able to. Literally get through all of the. The footage review to appropriately prosecute a case. And quite frankly, I mean, a defendant deserves to have. A prosecutor do the, the, the due diligence that is required to make sure it is an appropriate case to move forward. So to answer your question, yes, we will at some point. Need a lot more human resources attorneys. To be able to handle the, the amount of. Evidence that needs to be reviewed on every case.
Thank you. Chris, when we had this presentation at CCI. From, let me see the name here, hold on, I'm sorry. Erin Powers. She talked an awful lot about the civil liability created. For, for. With this case. And that there's no damage cap anymore. And, and that the impact is yet to be determined on rising insurance costs and the pressure to settle ca- claims and. Uncapped cost of claims. And then it says liability under Senate Bill two seventeen is not the same as the liability. Ability local governments already face under federal civil rights claims and section nineteen eighty-three. Qualified immunity is not absolute immunity from suit and in Colorado rarely serves and it has an outright bar to claims against law enforcement. Officers. What, what does that? What does that look like for us in terms of the county? For, for increased liability there or increased exposure there? Because I, the way that I understand that is, like, even if you have an officer that has a camera on and they turn the camera on. And somebody says, oh, they had misconduct or whatever, and then something happened with the recording. You know, in her presentation, Erin Powers said, you know, that there is no exception for rapidly involving circumstances. So how, I mean, what, what does that open us up for? And, and does that create a bigger exposure for us?
I, I think, I think I heard my name. This one, and I have not seen that information for the presentation in order to, to compare it to other information I have. I, I think I hate to use the lawyer phrase of it depends, but I think that's, that's going to be part of it. There is the potential for. Broader exposure. It, you know, it almost, it turns into more of a negligent standard, you know, and. You know, so there, there is the potential for that, but I haven't seen any information specific to this bill. You know, constituting a waiver of the, you know, Board of County Commissioners, the county. You know. Sovereign immunity, if you will, for that. And Heidi, I don't know if you have, you've obviously drilled deeper down into this than I have. But. I haven't seen anything that it, that expressly does that.
Well, I, I, I did take a look and there's a couple of sections in there that I, I think Commissioner Marcella is really sort of. Talking about. And on page three, let me pull this up, on page three subsection two. No, yeah, sorry. Subsection three, excuse me. That if a peace officer fails to activate a body worn camera or a dash cam as required, or they tamper with it, or. When, when it's required to be activated, there's a permissive inference in any investigation or legal proceeding. Excluding criminal proceedings against the peace officer, that the missing footage would have reflected misconduct by the peace officer. So if basically, if it hasn't, if it's not recorded, there is an inference that will be shown at trial. That what wasn't shown contained misconduct by the officer. That's, that's the inference that, 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 that the defense will be able to, to put forward. Because that's what this says. So if you didn't record it. The jury then gets the inference that there was in fact misconduct during what wasn't reported.
Yeah, I, I see that, that language, but I don't, I don't read that as an express waiver. Of any immunity that might apply to the county.
So would, because I think, when I, I, what I wanted to, to check, like, you know, when, when. When we have a claim that comes against. Like a deputy or, or a county employee, that claim is filed against the county and the Board of County Commissioners. Is part of that suit as the county, because we carry the insurance policy. And so. With, in this presentation, let me share my screen here. For just a second. And I can. Can try to show you. In this. Can you see this presentation?
Yeah, and that actually, I also say, Sarah put the link to it, I think, or, you know, Kayla, you put the link to it and I just pulled that up. And I see that the comment made there, but I'm not seeing.
So where it says the, it eliminates the immunities and qualified immunity, and, and so I don't know. What that, what that's supposed to mean for us. You know.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to look into that. That's not something that I've seen anything. That's been addressed on this expressly, but I can certainly look into it and see if anybody's. Looked into that beyond this presentation. I, I don't know, did, were any written materials provided with this? Program? That maybe they're citing to.
I think, I think this was the only thing, right, Jeff? And then Erin, Erin gave the presentation with it?
Yeah, I don't remember there being like any kind of background memo or, you know, list of citations to the bill itself.
Yeah.
There, there is, there's this and then there's, there's the actual like video recording.
Yeah.
You know.
What, what, Kayla, you're showing on the screen now has to do with, you know, federal. Claims as well, you know, section nineteen eighty-three claims.
Okay.
And Chris, what I, I think that under the. SB two seventeen, I think the section that, that would be applicable really to this discussion is the thirteen twenty-one one thirty-one. And that talks about the statutory immunities and liabilities of the officers and the agencies. And the either counties or municipalities.
Okay. I will take a look at that and circle back around with you commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if related, but I think towards the, in the second half of the bill. I, I was reading some of those, that language and. I was interpreting it to mean that, you know, this, this was putting more of that responsibility on the individual as an officer. For their actions.
Yeah, and it does have language about, you know, disciplinary action that would be taken, you know, can be taken for. That, you know, it says, in addition to any criminal liability and penalty, you know, if, if it's found that they. Intentionally failed to activate their camera or tamper with that, that type of thing, that they would be. Subject to discipline up to and including termination.
Okay, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think actually we might, I, I might not have clarity now on. The, are, because we. Because we have the body cameras. Do we need to respond to all these requests? do we need to respond to all these requests? I, in my head, I'm trying to think about it. Right now, cases and investigations, that is nothing really new. Except that everybody needs to have these body cameras and another kind of body of evidence now that needs to be handled and managed and controlled and, and shared. Outside of cases and investigations, do we now have an additional responsibility because we have those body cameras? I know, I think we touched on this a little bit, but I'm, I'm not sure that we have like a consensus on what, what, what we are required to do or what our interpretation of that is.
So Commissioner Mudge, I can give you my, I mean, obviously I'm not the attorney for the county, so I'm not telling the county what to do, but my office will not be providing that information until we are required to do so by statute.
All right, so this, so, so for me, if that were the consensus of on our side, then I think maybe sheriff's comments, you know, since we have these, we need to be ready in April. I know that's not quite exactly what you said, but I think that was like kind of how that conversation was leading. That is not necessarily the case. I'm not, and, and I don't know how we like collectively, you know, what, that's, I think what we should figure out how to decide.
Sure, and, and you know, you, you're, you know, you guys as a body need to, right, de- decide that. I will tell you that, like I say, my office, I will not be providing any of this information until July 1st of 2023 unless there is a compelling reason to do so in any one particular case. There's nothing in the law that requires that it be provided to the general public within 21 days of anyone asking, but, you know, until January, excuse me, July 1st of 2023.
So I think aside from that though, I think what the question you're trying to ask Sarah, if I'm understanding correctly, is now that we have the body cams and that they'll be ready to be implemented and that information and the footage that comes from those body cams with any kind of arrest in any kind of criminal case will need to be turned over to the, to the DA and the defendant through the discovery process. Will we have to have the next steps in place to give that footage to them? Is that what, what you mean?
Um, not exactly. I, I, I think that's, that's what I was trying to express was, was a given in my mind, you know, that of course will be again, another body of evidence to be handled and shared appropriately. And if we do have that redaction software, you know, that conversation as Heidi kind of outlined can be had between the DA and the sheriff's office of what, what to do with that when it is appropriate and requested and necessary for a case or an investigation. My, my question was then, I guess I'm trying to get at relieving us of an extra burden in not, you know, perhaps taking the stance of Heidi for her office currently in saying that we, we, we are going to take our time to figure out how managing new policies or addressing other aspects in the act as far as behavior and reporting and recording need to go. And we are not going to respond to, you know, requests for this footage until 2023. I mean, in my mind, that just, that kind of makes a lot of sense for getting, getting these new requirements ironed out.
So, so you mean like providing the public with the footage within 21 days? No, I mean, that, that, that piece of it outside of providing the footage through the discovery process and those are two totally separate tracks. Okay, I understand what you're saying. Okay.
Yep, yep. And, and, and again, just to, just to be consistent and clear and sending, you know, the message, according to this act, there has to be a filed report of misconduct. Correct, Heidi? To then request footage. And that's outside of a pending case or an investigation. I'm not sure I accurately outline that.
Oh, I, I, yeah, to answer your question, I, I, again, I, I think it depends. What I, I guess if, if I could just give an example as to what the, the reason that I'm taking the position that I am right now. We had a case in Eagle County and it was a homicide case. Information had been written about the case throughout, you know, the, the, the previous year. On the day of jury selection, there was a big article in The Veil Daily about the case and it gave all of this information. Well, the jurors are sitting out in the hallway and they read it. That's a, that's a mistrial because the information in the newspaper is now information that every single potential juror had and we don't know if that information would actually be introduced as evidence in the trial anyway. So to give out information and to put it into the general public has the possibility of tainting any potential jury trial. I mean, people can't unknow what they know. People can't un, right, they, they can't unlearn what they've already learned about a case. And it's a very difficult thing for, for someone to do. So I think that by providing information to the general public about open investigations, cases that haven't gone to trial, I think it taints a potential jury. I think it is, it, it, it leads to a potential deprivation of rights of a defendant and which isn't fair to the defendant. It's also not fair to a victim to not have their day in court simply because, you know, information is now out there that we can't control under the rules of evidence which are, which are very specifically laid out to be fair to both sides in court. So that's the ultimate reason why until my office is statutorily required to provide that information, meaning July 1st of 2023, I'm not going to do it because I think it weakens every single case out there.
Sorry, I saw you on mute too, so I wasn't sure if you can talk first. Heidi, do you, do you, I know that this is speculation, but do you anticipate those items being addressed in this bill with any forthcoming legislation or anything like that? Because I think that, you know, some of the ambiguities in the legislation is like a huge point that has been brought up is that you know, there, this, this bill was intended to, to create accountability with the law enforcement community, which, you know, law enforcement has expressed wanting and, you know, the constituency has expressed wanting. And so I think we're both on the same page of having that accountability piece. But I just think that it, it kind of opened the doors to a whole bunch of what if situations and has the potential to cause a lot of those problems. So do you foresee any of that coming, coming down the pike? Changes to this to, to protect evidence?
So, yeah, Commissioner Marcella, I don't know specifically, I know there has been talk about some updates to 217, but I don't know what kind of updates. I don't know if those are, you know, to, to add extra definition or if it's to expand what 217 has already done into, right, to continue moving in that direction. I don't have that information. I know at CDAC, we are watching it closely, but there has been no, there have been no drafts to date of any updates to 217. And as soon as there are, I'm happy to, you know, sort of to talk about those and what I would see as ramifications. And I, I think there are a lot of unintended consequences to this particular legislation. So, you know, we will, for instance, you know, my, my attorney is becoming movie critics. I don't think that was ever the intent, but I guarantee you that's what's, that's what's going to happen. And it, it, it's gonna be rather burdensome. I don't say that because I don't think body cameras are good. I think we need body cameras in every single jurisdiction across the state. It's simply the human resource component about how to, to get through those and to review them and how to move forward in any case based upon the information that's in there.
Right. Well, I think, I, sorry, I just worry too a little bit about, you know, what, what this is going to have in terms of unintended consequences in regards to hiring law enforcement officers, because I think that we've seen a consistent struggle with that, you know, in rural, in rural communities and it hasn't been a field where there's been an overabundance of people wanting to go into a career in law enforcement. And I think some of these added liabilities without super strong leadership is going to be difficult to, you know, really, really recruit and retain because of the personal liability now imposed on some of those through, through some of this legislation. But again, I mean, I'm not trying to argue the accountability piece or the, the body camera footage. I just think it's, it's definitely some things that we have to consider, you know, through protecting our community and providing services.
Well, and maybe just as devil's advocate too, you know, there are some things in there, like you said, the accountability, maybe, maybe it provides a, while there are changes, maybe it provides a level of assurance or protection, a sense of protection in, in, you know, explicitly stating the expectation of intervening as it says further down in the bill. So yeah, I think it kind of, kind of certainly will have impacts on both sides of the spectrum there. But, and on my, like, I, I just think it's really nuanced. And, and of course I am coming from this, you know, from a layman's perspective of the details of the little litigation process and, and law enforcement requirements. But I, I mean, it seems that nobody can just ask for footage if there's a pending case or an investigation. There's, there's protections around that. And I, I think that's correct. Yes, Heidi? I mean, this is not, this is not allowing for a carte blanche, you know, release of that information.
So I think Commissioner Mudge, my reading of that is a little bit different than yours and I, I think there is a bit more availability to anyone who wants information on a case. And just if there is any sort of alleged malfeasance. But again, that is something that is going to impact all of us in several years.
Right.
And, you know, between now and then, I, I don't know what additions or edits might be made to any of this legislation.
Okay.
I can certainly take a look at that and maybe we can have a conversation about it. I, I didn't really look at that for this particular discussion that we had today.
Yeah, I, I mean, I feel like that's maybe that one piece that between a law enforcement DA and just county responsibility, we need to get clarity on. It certainly seems like that would be really interesting to, to create that kind of a problem. But, and I don't know, I mean, yeah, if there's room for interpretation there, it certainly needs to be clarified because as I read it, it says, you know, you have to submit a report of misconduct in order to get, you know, request the footage. It, it just seems to me that we shouldn't, I would prefer for the county, and I see the sheriff hopped off here, but that we kind of take the same stance of, you know, not necessarily entertaining, I don't know how we say this politically correct, entertain those requests until statutorily required, until we get some of the other foundational policies and procedures put in place so that we know that we're, you know, responding to them appropriately.
Sure.
And so this, this, Chris, I, you know, I, I posted in the, the chat too, that, that, you know, in terms of any request that would come directly to the county to be OCC for such information, it's expressly excluded from Cora. So that's, you know, criminal justice record type information isn't, isn't, you know, something that someone can just from the general public request under Cora. Also went on and, and did some quick research and posted a note that I found from the, a physical note from the legislative council staff addressing potential liability for local governments for judgments and fees and such. And it, so it, it seems to try to pattern the same thing that you would have under section 1983 claims. And the question is whether or not it's, you know, it's in lieu of or in addition to. So that's something that unfortunately will end up having to work its way probably through the courts.
Yeah, and, and just also maybe something that, that we can work on and monitor how labor intensive and what, what, what that really, what the sum of that effort is, I think between sheriff's office and the board is assessing, there's no, sorry, I, I don't know, I don't think I read that there's any prohibition to implementing fees for these requests. Is that correct? I mean, are we? Yeah, so that might be something to keep in mind too, as we, as we figure out, you know, now that we all have, the, the deputies have the body cams and they, as they work through cases and investigations and understand what that demand and, and that work actually, you know, really does look like. We can kind of prepare for a 2023 implementation of, you know, projected additional requests and, and work. But is there any other pieces that we want Wade, keep waiting through here? I, I appreciate the discussion. I think it's really helpful. And again, I think it's super nuanced and I mean, it's given me some, some better insight for sure. But should we try to perhaps convene in a couple of months to see if there's any, unless there's any big changes with the legislation before then? Keep that on our, in the, in mind.
Yeah, I think it would be good if we could reconvene, maybe after the legislative session has concluded. Just to see if there's been any changes brought forth this legislative session or if anything happens in the, the criminal justice CCI steering committee that they're planning going into 2022 even. But I think it'd be good for us to just, to just have an update in a couple of months after the legislative session.
Yeah, and I, I just, I mean, that, that all sounds good in terms of timing and then also, you know, just keeping an eye out for any resources we can find. You know, I feel like it's kind of a stab in the dark right now in terms of what staff we need, the sheriff's office would need to sort of handle, you know, both the evidence handling, but then especially, and Heidi, as you were saying, I mean, the, the movie and popcorn time to go through, I mean, hundreds of hours of video potentially, you know, just figuring out how other counties and law enforcement agencies are, 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 are guessing how to staff. That would be really helpful to, just so we can get ahead of that.
All right, well, doesn't, if there's nothing else to kind of dive into, are we ready to conclude the conversation?
Yeah, thank you for joining us today, Heidi and, and Sheriff, if you have that. But thanks for taking the time today to, to chat through that.
Sure, of course. And I will look up some of the other information that I had had. I took some notes on there and I will get the information about some of the other policies, the body cam, the body camera, body worn camera policies from some of the other agencies. Those to you and I'll reach out to Sheriff Reyes as well. But any questions that anyone has, I'm happy to, to discuss. Sometimes I don't know the answer until the question is asked and then I have to go look it up. So that's, that's good for me to do.
Amen, I'm right there with you.
Thank you so much for taking the time, Heidi. All right.
Well.
Thanks, commissioners. Okay, and at 3:07, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.